Get done with these Zoom meetings because it's very frustrating and apprehensive of being able to get on and etc. More stress than the meeting itself, quite frankly.
Okay, I'm calling the meetings to order for the June 16th Wayne City Council meeting. If we could everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance. United States of America.
And to the Republic.
Which stands unashamedly.
Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Mayor Racy.
Here.
Mayor Proton Porter.
Here.
Councilman Miller.
Present.
Councilman Webster.
Here.
Councilman Dowd.
Here.
Councilwoman Skiff.
Here.
Councilman Wagner.
Here.
Corinna's present. The first item is a moment of silence. A moment of silence for Buddy Creche, who is Deputy Clerk Kathy Broja's mother. A moment of silence for Catherine Pew, who is the mother of Planning Commissioner Bob Pew. And also for all those who have lost their lives due to COVID-19 virus.
Thank you.
First item on our agenda is to approve the agenda.
Move to approve the exception. Second, Wagner.
Roll call.
Mayor Proton Porter.
Yes.
Councilman Miller.
Yes.
Councilman Webster.
Yes.
Councilwoman Skiff.
Yes.
Councilman Wagner.
Yes.
Councilman Dowd.
Yes.
Mayor Racy.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number two is City Council minutes to approve the regular meeting of June 2nd, 2020.
To approve.
Or.
Any questions? Roll call.
Mayor Proton Porter.
Yes.
Councilman Miller.
Yes.
Councilman Webster.
Yes.
Councilwoman Skiff.
Yes.
Councilman Wagner.
Yes.
Councilman Dowd.
Yes.
Mayor Racy.
Yes.
Motion carries. Public questions regarding items on the agenda. I did get an email. From someone who wanted to make a request, a question request regarding general items C, which was. Six C. So Mayor, if I can, I'll go ahead and read that.
Okay.
Regarding general item C, request and schedule a study session to discuss the 29th District Court. Would Council please consider scheduling the study session after June 30th, 2020? The Governor's Executive Order 75 regarding the Open Meetings Act and virtual city council meetings is due to expire on June 30th, 2020. I can only assume at this time that after June 30th, City Council will be able to meet again in person at City Hall. I would like to attend in person the study session. Several months ago, as the discussion of court consolidation was under consideration. We, the public, were advised that findings and facts would be revealed to us when known. Again, I am asking the mayor and council to schedule the study session after June 30th so that the public can attend in person at City Hall. Thank you for your consideration. Sharon Bonick, Sim Street, Wayne. That was all I had for that.
And then do we have any attendees here tonight that would like to speak at this time? If so, please raise your hand in the attendee room. And that's at the bottom of your page. Okay, I see one. And I just want to say if anybody's wanting to speak about the zoning change for the medical, what was it? What do we call that, Tina?
It was a drug rehabilitation facility.
The drug rehabilitation facility, that would be at the end of the meeting?
Yes, I will read that. Any of those comments that requested to go ahead and have them read at the end during public comments, Brian's not on the agenda.
These comments currently are just for things that are on the agenda. If it's not on the agenda, that's at the end of the meeting. But if it's for something that's on the current agenda, this is the time to speak. I have one. Good evening. Mr. Marcus, I think.
It is. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, councilpersons. I just had a question regarding the agenda and whether or not my communication was received by the council and the mayor that I sent today regarding Agenda item 8A.
Yes. Okay, anything else?
Yeah, based upon my understanding, it's not open for any kind of discussion at this time. I wanted to simply confirm that my email message was received by council and that council will offer some guidance in the future on how to deal with it.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, let's go ahead and move the agenda.
Item number three is ordinances and amendments. 3A, second reading and adoption of ordinance 2020-02 to provide for a service charge in lieu of taxes for Wayne Towers owner National Church residences.
Through.
Or.
Was that Councilman Webster?
Yes.
Okay, supported by Councilwoman Skiff.
Any questions? Ms. Goen, did you have anything?
I discussed this at length at the last meeting, but just in case there's people that are not listening, I can kind of do a recap if that's okay, Mayor?
Sure.
This is the request for the second reading and the adoption of a pilot program. Pilot stands for payment in lieu of taxes. This pilot program will be for a period of 35 years. Wayne Towers is a subject property we are discussing this evening. There has been a pilot program in place there since 1972. As part of their MISTHA funding that they are trying to obtain, the pilot program would be necessary moving forward. We did get a list of critical repair, a number of critical repairs at 334,000, non-critical repairs at 258,000 approximately for a total of 590, say $3,000. So I know your memo says 590, but it's closer to 593,000 dollars worth of improvements the residents at Wayne Towers are going to see in the very near future. The City of Wayne would receive approximately 10% of 95% of their rent or occupancy rates. And just to give you kind of a breakdown, in 2018, the City of Wayne received 84,000, 2019, 90,000, 2020, 90,000 is the projected, and I'm rounding these numbers down as opposed to up. And then the 2021 projection of income to the City of Wayne would be $92,000. So that is 10% of the 95% of their occupancy rates. So we might remember we did this for Atwood Gardens, it's part of HUD or MISTHA financing. This is something that is required to get their financing through, and I can answer any questions if there are any, Mr. Mayor.
Is there any questions from council?
Through the chair. I did request at the last meeting that if we could get a list of the improvements that they plan on accomplishing for that property. I do see that in the memos here that parking lot will be resurfaced and improved accessibility, handicap accessibility. I appreciate if we could get the list of all the investments that that would be going forward with this.
Through the chair, Councilman Miller, I would be happy to share the list with you if you would like to come look at that. They did send it under pressure as opposed to having time to put a generic list together. I do not feel comfortable releasing that list publicly as it's their actual property assessment, but I would be more than happy to share with you a general idea if you'd like to look at that list of what type of repairs they're going to make. The list they sent was so specific, it included each apartment number and the repairs that were being made. And like I said, he was under pressure to get this to me and I didn't want to lock him in publicly to that. But that is their breakdown and I would be more than happy to share that with you in person if you'd like to stop by and go over that list.
Thank you, and I do appreciate that. I just want to make sure that we have some accountability. I think this is great news regarding this. So I just wanted to follow up on it and I do appreciate perhaps tomorrow afternoon.
That sounds wonderful. I'll be here, sir. Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mayor Proton Porter.
Yes.
Councilman Miller.
Yes.
Councilman Webster.
Yes.
Councilwoman Skiff.
You're muted.
Sorry, yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Wagner.
Yes.
Councilman Dowd.
Yes.
Mayor Racy.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item four, appointments to boards, commissions, commissions and committees. 4A is reappointment of John Mills of Chestnut Street to the Wayne Cemetery Board for a four-year term to expire July 2024.
Move to approve.
Second, Dowd.
Was that Councilman Miller, supported by Councilman Dowd?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor.
Any questions? Roll call.
Mayor Proton Porter.
Yes.
Councilman Miller.
Yes.
Councilman Webster.
Yes.
Councilwoman Skiff.
Yes.
Councilman Wagner.
Yes.
Councilman Dowd.
Yes.
Mayor Racy.
Yes.
Motion carries. 4B, reappointment of Claudia Buckaloo, Parkview Drive, and John Mills of Chestnut Street to the Wayne Historical Commission for a three-year term to expire July 2023.
Move to approve.
Second, Dowd.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mayor Proton Porter.
Yes.
Councilman Miller.
Yes.
Councilman Webster. Councilman Webster.
Yes.
Councilwoman Skiff.
Yes.
Councilman Wagner.
Yes.
Councilman Dowd.
Yes.
Mayor Racy.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 4C. Reappointment of Merle Baum of Meadow Lawn Street to the Wayne Planning Commission for a three-year term to expire July 2023.
Move to approve.
Or.
Questions? Roll call.
Mayor Proton Porter.
Yes.
Councilman Miller.
Yes.
Councilman Webster.
Yes.
Councilwoman Skiff.
Yes.
Councilman Wagner.
Yes.
Councilman Dowd.
Yes.
Mayor Racy.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 4D. Reappointment of Dennis Hermits of Glenwood Road and Rupert Hilliard of Knoll Drive to the Wayne Zoning Board of Appeals for three-year terms to expire July 2023.
Move to approve. Back and forth.
Questions? Roll call.
Mayor Proton Porter.
Yes.
Councilman Miller.
Yes.
Councilman Webster.
Yes.
Councilwoman Skiff.
Yes.
Councilman Wagner.
Yes.
Councilman Dowd.
Yes.
Mayor Racy.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 4E, approval of the resignations of Thomas Daley from Wayne Cemetery Board and Ann Zimmerman from the Wayne Historical Commission.
Move to approve.
Second, Dowd.
Any questions?
Indicate why they want to resign.
Um. Yes.
I can, I can address it, yes.
Yeah, sure, go right ahead, Mayor.
I know Tom Daley's been resigning from a lot of different things. He's just, he's just feeling like it's time to let other people do it. And Ann's, and I asked about Ann. She's actually at the end of her term and she decided that she wanted to allow somebody else to be able to be in that role. So she just decided to step aside so somebody else can be involved and she's still involved in the historical side of it. So she'll still be around. I saw her tonight. She was at our, at the groundbreaking tonight. So it's not, it's just giving other people opportunities. But do you think we should send them, and we'll send letters to both of them for taking them for what they've done.
Definitely, I always do, yes.
So do you want, any other questions? Roll call.
Mayor Proton Porter.
Yes.
Councilman Miller.
Oh, reluctant, yes.
Councilman Webster.
Yes.
Councilwoman Skiff.
Yes.
Councilman Wagner.
Yes.
Councilman Dowd.
Yes.
Mayor Racy.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Item number five is communications and reports. 5A, revenue and expenditure report for period ending May 2020.
Received and filed.
And 5B was letter of commendation for Chief Ryan Strong, City Manager.
Yes, thank you. I would like to read this, this letter this evening, not only into record, but because I just want to say that I echo this letter 100% with regards to accolades for Chief Strong's leadership always and also during the COVID-19 pandemic. The memo reads, "The City Manager Lisa Nasserim, Lieutenant Finley Carter, regarding commendation for Chief Ryan Strong. I'm writing this letter to commend Chief Ryan Strong. Since the beginning of COVID-19 pandemic, Chief Strong has demonstrated great leadership in implementing the necessary policies and procedures to ensure the health and safety of the employees at the Wayne Police Department. Chief Strong was diligent and committed in his efforts to quickly locate and obtain enough personal protective equipment for staff as well as sanitation supplies. In addition, Chief Strong was assertive with his actions in setting up testing for not only sworn personnel, but our civilian support staff. With his swift decision-making, Chief Strong was able to mitigate the spread of COVID-19 to only one staff member who tested positive but later recovered. Chief Strong was also innovative in his approach to providing staff with mental health and wellness training during the stressful time. For his commitment, constant professionalism, dedication to duty and to work ethic, it gives me great pleasure to commend Chief Ryan Strong for his leadership during the COVID-19 pandemic. Feel free to contact me with any questions you may have regarding this matter respectfully, Lieutenant Finley Carter." And I just, this letter was, was just amazing because I will tell you that having all those reports that we send out to you, all the updates we send out to you, that was a team effort led by Chief Strong, who has been participating on phone calls, meetings, endless meetings. He has just been fantastic to work with. Not only did he do a great job for his department, but he is absolutely just excelled for his city and his community. So I want to also offer my thanks to Chief Strong on a job well done and that continues. So thank you, Chief Strong, and thank you, Lieutenant Finley Carter.
That's great. Chief Strong's been a great asset. We've been very lucky. I've, I've been only hearing very positive things from everybody about, about his leadership and he's been doing a great job. So thank you.
Thank you.
And move the agenda.
Okay, item number six is general items. 6A, approval of budget amendment 2020-05.
Wish of counsel.
Motion to approve. Or.
I'm sorry, who was this apart?
Webster.
Okay, thank you.
I thought it was a robot.
Yeah, sounded kind of buzzy, didn't it?
Any questions?
Through the chair. I would just ask that after we have just approved a budget that we are already amending it, why is that?
You're always going to have amendments, Councilman. There's going to be costs that come in. There's going to be grant funds that we have to accommodate. That's just general practice. Anytime, anytime we send over a certain amount or anytime we have an increase or decrease in a net position, we have to report that to council. That's, that's something we've done, that's, that's required.
And some of this is a result of the impact that COVID-19 has placed on the municipalities, is that correct?
Yes, I would say. Not a lot, not a little bit, but we're working on family reimbursements for that process. I just submitted the second or third one, actually. So a lot of that has to do with overtime for the fire department when they ended up with eight out with COVID. Unfortunately, the costs went up. So you are correct, some of this does have to do with overtime, certainly.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay, roll call.
Mayor Proton Porter.
Yes.
Councilman Miller.
Yes.
Councilman Webster.
Yes.
Councilwoman Skiff.
Yes.
Councilman Wagner.
Yes.
Councilman, excuse me, Councilman Dowd.
Yes.
Mayor Racy.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 6B is approval of revised commercial rehabilitation certificate previously approved by council on January 21st, 2020.
Motion to approve. Support.
Ms. Goen.
Thank you, Mayor Racy. This is, as the city clerk mentioned, this is something you approved in January of 20, January 21st of 2020. This is for the property that's located on Van Born, at the corner of Van Born and Merriman, Merriman, 31720. Unfortunately, right as they were getting ramped up and getting ready to get things started, COVID hit. They're waiting for Treasury to get back to them to make sure that the certificate was complete. A couple of weeks ago, we got notification from the Department of Treasury, as they have not been working either, that there was an issue with the resolution the council passed. Typically, a municipality approves a commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate for 10 to 12 years. We only approved it for five years. Anytime you approve a certificate for less than the 10 years, there has Anytime you approve a certificate for less than the 10 years, there has to be a specific mention of that being that it shall not be or shall be, or how it could be extended in the future. As you can see, the wording that is in your resolution is that it's for five years and it shall not be extended past the five-year timeframe. The other item is due to the pandemic and the shutdown of the construction industry and the process of a commercial rehab certificate being issued. We've extended their estimated completion date to December 31st, 2020. Obviously, obviously, the petitioner is anxious to get this approved so he can start with the renovation of his proposed multifamily living unit. And that's all I have, Mayor. I can take any questions.
Any questions? Roll call.
Mayor Proton Porter.
Yes.
Councilman Miller.
Yes.
Councilman Webster.
Yes.
Councilwoman Skiff.
Yes.
Councilman Wagner.
Yes.
Councilman Dowd.
Yes.
Mayor Racy.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, counsel.
Okay, the item number six C is to request a scud, and schedule a study session to discuss the 29th District Court.
Mayor, this was my recommendation. I.
Do I need a motion first, or?
Motion for discussion, motion and support to open discussion.
Move to approve.
Court.
Okay, Councilman Dowd.
Sorry.
No, no problem.
Oh, I just wanted to get this on the agenda in support of our, of our resolution that we actually put out in assessing and looking for long-term solutions where we, with other courts and other options. I think the best thing for us to do is have a study session and get the details, where we are with the current system, where we are with everything else, and, and have a study session on this matter.
Okay. Any other questions? Any, any dates in mind?
Yeah, Mayor, to the chair, does July 14th work for everyone? Evening?
Yes.
That's a, that's a planning commission meeting.
Oh.
Ms. Goen's gone already. I mean.
I'm not, I'm not gone.
Is, is there a planning commission meeting?
Yes, there is.
There will be one, okay.
Yeah, there's a planning commission meeting.
So we wouldn't be able to start till late.
Okay.
Because they, their meeting's at seven, correct?
Yes, we do, we do need to hold that meeting. I'm sorry.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, 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 you do.
And the 21st is a council meeting?
It is.
Okay, the 28th? I will be gone on the 28th. Okay. Take a look here.
I mean, we could, I mean.
August 11th. Wait, wait. Wayne Cruz is, wait, Wayne Cruz is July.
Mayor, August 11th is planning commission?
Yep. Yeah, the second Tuesday is always going to be a planning commission meeting.
Well, do we have to necessarily have it on a Tuesday? Can we do another day of the week, possibly in that last weeks of July?
I know it's an issue for Councilman Wagner has issues with his work. I think he.
If we're scheduling that far, I can probably do it.
Okay. Are you? Can you do, can you do the 13th of July, or would you rather?
That's my birthday.
Can you do the 15th of July?
It's fine, I'm not, I don't celebrate much anymore.
13th of July is fine?
July is good for me.
Is July 13th good for everybody?
Yes.
Make it work.
And we should also check with, are we going to invite the court, like Linda Gable, to come to this meeting also? I mean, we should check with her and see if she can make it also.
Yeah, you, yeah, if we can, then I would imagine the judge also probably would show for that also. That's fine. We can invite him. That's fine.
So we're asking for the 13th?
The 13th. Yep.
What time?
Six or seven.
I'm good with six.
I'm good with six.
I give you six.
Six here, too.
Six o'clock. Okay. Okay. Do they, do we need a motion with that time, or we just, we say that time, or we just vote on that?
Well, a motion by Councilwoman Skiff and supported by Webster and with discussion is settled for July 13th, 2020 at 6:00 PM.
Yeah, everybody good with that?
We can do a roll.
Yes.
So we'll do a roll call then, okay.
Mayor Proton Porter.
Yes.
Councilman Miller.
Yes.
Councilman Webster.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Skiff.
Yes.
Councilman Wagner.
Yes.
Councilman Dowd.
Yes.
Mayor Racy.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item five D is approval of change order number one to Dominic Gagliol.
No, I'm going to, I'll just jump into Lori's office real quick. Yeah.
You're still live.
Because I don't want to jump out.
I think they don't.
All right, leave and come back in. Can I try that? Okay. Oh, okay, let me try that.
Get right back.
I, I froze. Can you let him know, Jeff? Thanks. It's probably my phone.
Oh, boy.
The wonders of Zoom.
It's on freeze. I'm frozen. Yeah.
She's muted now.
Okay, item six D, approval of change order number one to Dominic Gagliol Construction of Southgate, Michigan in the amount of $73,393 for the 2020 concrete pavement removal and replacement project to be provided through the Major Road Fund.
Move to approve change order for $73,393. Court, out.
Any questions? Roll call.
Mayor Proton Porter.
Yes.
Councilman Miller.
Yes.
Councilman Webster.
Yes.
Councilwoman Skiff.
Yes.
Councilman Wagner.
Yes.
Councilman Dowd.
Yes.
Mayor Racy.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, item number seven, administration reports.
Sorry, everybody, I, my video froze, so I couldn't tell that I was still on. So I appreciate everybody the heads up. Um, all right, one second. I'm going to start with, there were no questions last week, so I know that there are two updates. Jody, are you on the phone this evening from the library?
She is.
Jody wanted to provide a report this evening, Mayor.
Oops. There she is. Jody, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
I can.
Great. Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, and members of council. I asked to speak tonight to give everyone an update on the library's reopening. The library is going to be reopening in phases, will gradually be bringing back services as we consider current recommendations and regulations, the availability of supplies, staffing levels, and most importantly, our ability to manage each phase safely and successfully. So while the library building remains close to, closed to the public, I'm happy to share with you tonight that we have entered our next phase of reopening today. And we are now offering Plaza pickup of library materials. The way it works is you'll place a hold for items that you want, that the Wayne Public Library owns. Unfortunately, we can't get items from other libraries at this time, but anything we own, you can request it. You'll do that either online through the library catalog, or you can give us a phone call to reserve an item. We'll contact you when your materials are ready and schedule an appointment for you to come pick them up at the Veterans Plaza library entrance. And pickups are by appointment only at this time. Also, our library staff are available to answer your questions via email or phone from noon to 5:00 PM, Tuesday through Saturday. You can email us at help@wayne.lib.m i.us or give us a call at 734-721-7832, and we'll be happy to assist you. So if you need some help putting your items on hold, if you have questions about any of our virtual programming, if you need a little assistance downloading eBooks or audiobooks, just give us a call or email, and we will talk you through it. I want to just thank everyone for your continued understanding and patience during this time. We are working hard to make sure that the library reopens safely for everyone in the community, and we are very excited to be able to start offering this Plaza pickup service so that everyone can start getting the books and movies and all the other materials that they want again. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Jody, just a question on the return, what's the process for the returning part? In the same, same method of dropping off, a scheduled appointment kind of thing, or?
You can return materials anytime. We have two outdoor drop boxes on the Veterans Plaza side. So you'll just put them in the outdoor drop boxes, and those are open to receive your returns whenever. We are not charging overdue fines yet, so you're welcome to return them at your convenience.
Any other questions? Jody, did you say what hours you're, you're open then to call?
Noon until 5:00 PM, Tuesday through Saturday.
And have you got back most of your materials from people? Because I know you had let things slide during all of this.
We're getting a lot back. We kind of asked people to hold on to them if they could while we were closed. So we're seeing a lot come back now. We are quarantining everything that comes back for three days before we check it in, just to be safe. So we're getting a lot back, but we know we still have a lot out there.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, all right, through the chair, the Community Development Director, Lori Dawn, has a few updates tonight as well.
Thank you, Lisa, I appreciate it. I just wanted to share with all of you, you remember the last meeting, you issued an ability for the Building Department to accept applications from business owners, whether it be a restaurant or a retail business, to review their proposed plan if they wanted to do outdoor dining or outdoor retail sales. That was for a period of 120 days, which ends on September 30th. I did hand-deliver the applications to numerous businesses. What I did find was that they were very thrilled that we were giving them that ability to expedite permit. The only business as of right now that I think may take care of, in addition to their regular outdoor dining that they go through the ZBA, they may come to submit an application for additional space, and that would be US 12. They may look at utilizing their side parking lot as well. Just so you know, counsel, I did go to Northside Hardware, and I was kind of finding a common theme throughout my visits, that unfortunately, a lot of the businesses just don't have the employees to operate exterior, whether it's sales or dining. So I wanted to commend this council, those of you that approved this initiative. This is something that was actually a webinar the week after we did it. Wayne County did a webinar and encouraged communities to do the same thing by expediting these special use permits, by having them submit site plans. And Westland passed this last night, actually. So thank you for being ahead of the curve, so to speak, and thank you for your support for those of you who supported it. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. There's just a couple of updates tonight. First, I know that I reported this to council, but I wanted to, to let you know that I, I just want to thank the staff and the public. The first week of opening with masks and with social distancing protections in place, which was the week of the eighth last week, and we're going into our second week at City Hall in most of our buildings, has gone extremely well. We want to thank, on behalf of all of us, the citizens for wearing masks in the department or into the, in the building. As I said, it's difficult for us to socially distance in the hallways here because they're so small. But we just want to thank everybody for your cooperation. I've had no complaints from any of the staff, and it's just been a great experience, and we really just, it's awesome. So thank you to everybody, and please continue to work with us. I know that there's been questions about why these Zoom meetings are continuing when the governor has talked about, you know, gatherings of 100. Well, pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order Number 2020-75, all council boarding commission meetings will be held electronically through June 30th, 2020. So I also want to caution council that, you know, obviously, as soon as that is removed, we can go back to as normal as possible. However, I do want to let you know that I will be working with the police chief to try to figure out the best way to follow social distancing protocol in our small council chambers. You know, certainly, we want to make sure to try to accommodate everybody. We're going to have to make a lot of changes if the need for separation of council members, staff, and the public is still necessary. So we'll do everything we can in our powers to make sure that we can accommodate as, as many people as possible. But again, we have a very small city hall and a very small space to work with. So we appreciate everybody's understanding. We work through that. Lastly, I know the mayor and others will probably mention this, but I just wanted to thank the, everyone who came out to support the Veterans Memorial Groundbreaking today. This project has been years in the making, and we had an incredible turnout. It was, it was unbelievable. So I just want to say how nice it was to see everyone, and I think it was just fantastic. I did put pictures up on the Facebook page, the city's Facebook page as well. So please visit that. I want to thank Ed Queen, a member of the committee and veteran for serving as the keynote speaker today. And he did a great job, and Pastor Seth McDonald from Hillcrest Bible Church for the opening prayer. Channel 7 also covered the event, which was great. So look for that newscast on some point. Maybe it's already been on this evening. And I also want to thank the Department of Public Works for setting up the event today. They did a great job. It was just very well done, and I just appreciate everybody pitching into this effort. Mayor Proton Porter, we missed you today. I know you couldn't make it, and, and so you were there, and actually, you're probably lucked out because I was going to put you on the spot and make you our keynote today. So you, you actually lucked out, and, but Ed, Ed represented you well as a veteran, and so we, we definitely know that you were there in spirit, sir. So that'll be my report this evening, Mayor.
We did promise Mayor Proton that you'll be wearing your sailor suit at the.
God is going to help. I don't think I could get one leg in it.
Well, thank you, Mayor, for all of your donations and support, too. You've been incredible on this project.
And move the agenda.
Item number eight, closed session. We'll need a motion and a support for that.
Question.
Support, Skiff.
Roll call.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Porter.
Yes.
Councilman Miller.
Yes.
Councilman Webster.
Yes.
Councilwoman Skiff.
Yes.
Councilman Wagner.
His voice is on.
Oops.
Yes.
There you go.
Councilman Dowd.
Yes.
Mayor Racy.
Yes.
Come on back in.
All right, so. All right, so Council, you were emailed information regarding going into that closed session. So I believe what we need to do is everyone needs to mute ourselves and then we need to go ahead and go into the closed session.
So just to confirm, we don't leave the meeting? We just mute ourselves, turn the video off and then talk on the phone?
Yes, let me, if I could just have a minute?
Yeah, because if we all leave the meeting, I don't know if that...
Yeah, I want to make sure.
Yeah, we don't want to have to trouble the agenda.
I've been told both ways, I just want to make sure.
Yes, and just a reminder, this is not a video meeting, this is a conference call because we had a little bit of a struggle with getting Zoom set up.
Can I ask, what do we call into then?
I can't, it's an email.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought we were going to be talking by phone?
Yes, we are.
Okay, but it's going to be through Zoom, but it's not going to be visual?
Yes, that's correct.
But you can use your regular phone.
I'm confused, so we have to call in? It's just like a conference.
Yes, so what...
Provided by us by email?
Yes, so if we could, what you'll have to do is mute yourselves and turn off your video. And in your email, if you have the ability to check your email, there was a, a phone number emailed to you and it's not through Zoom, it's through another entity. Oh, wait, is it?
Yes.
It is a Zoom, Lisa, okay. And then you have your meeting ID there. You will need to mute yourselves and turn off your video.
I didn't, you said it's in our emails? I don't have it. When did you send it?
A little, about a half an hour, 40 minutes ago.
Oh, I just got it, that's so weird. Okay, I went in and it wasn't there and then it popped up, so it's okay. I got it.
Does everyone else?
Can we go through the council and before we jump off, can we have the clerk just go through the council, make sure everybody's got the number, the council members?
I think some people have jumped off already.
Some have jumped off. Councilman Dowd, do you have the number? Okay, so you can close out your video then. Turn off your video. If you have the phone number, go ahead and close out your video and mute yourself, but stay in the meeting.
Do we dial the phone number at all?
Yes, you dial the phone number, but make sure you mute yourself, Councilman Miller? And turn off your video.
All right.
There you go. Good job. Councilman Miller, I see you're good there.
Stop video and mute. Everybody in there?
I did not fall asleep. I did actually, actually.
We're live, we are live on, so this is, this is not.
I was just gonna say I hit my cheek on the phone and I had to dial back in. I don't know if you guys caught that.
Is everybody here? Are we missing Lisa?
I did not fall asleep. I did actually, actually.
We're live, we are live on, so this is, this is not.
I was just gonna say I hit my cheek on the phone and I had to dial back in. I don't know if you guys caught that.
Is everybody here? Are we missing Lisa? Missing anybody or everybody here?
Is everybody here? Um, yeah, we're missing Lisa.
Yeah, we're missing Lisa. Did you get a switch over? Okay. Can I get a motion to, uh? We're reconvening and it's, uh, sorry, eight, uh?
Forty-one.
Forty-one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And I need a motion to, uh, close the closed session.
Motion to close the closed session. For?
Roll call.
Mayor Proton Porter.
Yes.
Councilman Miller.
Yes.
Councilman Webster.
Yes.
Councilwoman Skip.
Yes.
Councilman Wagner.
Yes.
Councilman Dowd.
Yes.
Mayor Racy.
Yes.
Motion Kerry. Now it's time for, um, public comments for matters not on the agenda. Pursuant to Michigan's Open Meetings Act and the enacted procedures and rules of city council, now is the time for public comment. Any questions will not be answered this evening, but the appropriate person will make their best effort to respond by the next council meeting or as soon as possible, provided you state or leave your contact information with the city clerk. Please limit your comments to three minutes. And mayor, I did have one emailed me, emailed into me, um, earlier today, or, um, excuse me, yesterday, and they requested for it to still be read at this meeting because it pertains to the item that was removed. Oh, it, um, it was just a simple statement that says, "We prefer not to have an overnight drug rehab facility located here. Please read this at another city council meeting." Thank you. And that was from Janine Edgar of Wayne.
Okay, thank you. So do we have anybody that is in the attendees that wish to speak tonight? If so, please raise your hand in the attendee area. I'm having a panelist. Yes. There we go. I think, nope, it's, it's wanting to be a panelist for some reason. Okay. Does he have enough? That's what I'm clicking and it's, it's creating that. Okay. Good evening. Is it, I lost your, is that Vicky? Hello? Hello? Hello, Vicky?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sorry. I lost your name.
That's okay. It wasn't you, it was me. I unmuted.
Oh, no problem.
Um, I'm Vicky Meesman. I live, I believe, in Mr. Dowd's district number, or ward number four, or Councilman Dowd. Um, my grandchildren, my daughter, lives on Sophia. Um, that's, um, I believe the question or the statement that was given to you by email. Um, I'm not, not her, but, um, I, I will tell you that the residents there are quite concerned and anxious about it. Um, I am too. My grandchildren live directly across from the parking lot of the facility that you're, um, considering rezoning. And I was wondering, um, you know, there was trouble last, last year, um, the place had already been closed, the pharmaceutical company that was there before, and there were people gathering in there and, um, the residents there. When sitting on the, when sitting on her porch, I wondered, why are these people there? Because the building has been closed. Um, when the results of that were that, um, residents there called the police. There was drug dealing and possibly prostitution, and the police department thanked them. They thanked them very much. They dispersed the crowd several times and eventually there wasn't anybody there anymore. And, um, the residents there have relatively lived a peaceful life without that, you know, kind of thing going on. But now they have a concern about the drug rehabilitation place being there and the gatherings and what might happen. Um, I was kind of surprised that it was put on Main Street, you know, historic Wayne Main Street. But, um, I was wondering, isn't there any place else? I mean, it is unneeded, it is needed. I mean, addiction, addiction is a serious problem, and if people are trying to get help, they should be helped. But it seems like there should be a more appropriate setting for that to take place at. And as a resident of Wayne and as grandchildren, and I have an invested interest in that, um, I would have to say no with capital letters. Um, I think that the residents have been sending in emails to you, and I'm sure they will be following this meeting. I, I believe it was put on the agenda in the first place, but taken off. I don't know why, and I don't know how you're going to proceed with this, but I know that the residents on that street and surrounding areas would like to know, even with Karma Cafe, Fox on the Avenue, um, you know, it's, it's, it's something to, and I know you will, I know you'll seriously consider it, and the residents request, and, um, and I appreciate that, and that's all I have to say about it.
Thank you. I normally don't answer the questions, but I'm, I'm just gonna just say this so people understand that that might be on the phone for the same issue. Um, because we get, we got a bunch of questions, uh, this was actually went to the planning commission last week where no residents opposed it at all, and it, it was approved. And then, and we started getting, um, questions this weekend, and we've asked to have it go back to the planning commission, which the person that has the building has agreed, and it's gonna go through the process again. The planning commission's gonna meet, and the proposal that they're, they're gonna vote on is to have the, um, a public hearing on July 30th so that residents can, um, voice their concerns there. That's, will be the appropriate place to do that and try to vet out what's going on with it and, uh, figure out what, everything that's happening.
What I understand, the resident, well, the three of the residents that I know of, um, actually four, um, did not even know there was a consideration for this. Um, I have a letter in front of me, um, dated May 14th, 2020, and they were just given this letter by another, um, Wayne resident who happened to live on this street probably 20 years ago. Um, and it was sent to her.
Yeah, it, it goes out to, I think it's 300, is it 300 feet around?
Put down 300.
And so I believe 44 residents were given notice of that, and that's how, how it would normally happen.
Yeah, and it happened to be, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Um, it happened to be the mother of one of the residents on the street. Her mother used to live across the street in my daughter's home. So she made them aware of what was going on. And, um, I, I was surprised that Juliette and, uh, some of the others didn't even see this notice. Um, I'm not saying that, it, it probably got lost in the mail. I mean, this was, this was hand-delivered by the mother to the residents on there. They received a big packet about your Zoom meeting and things like that, and said it was going to be discussed tonight. And, um, I'm, I'm surprised with the concern like, um, Mr. Miller has for his representative, he's representative of a district or a ward, and he was, he was concerned that his residents should be in, in on this as far as, uh, your previous meeting on June 2nd, I think it was discussed on something. And, you know, I, I appreciated him saying that, um, but I would, I would really like you all to try and, um, I know you will, um, take this in serious and, and, uh, concerning situation that is coming up with them. I, I, I don't like the idea that my grandchildren are only 100 away from a facility that probably could be served better somewhere else.
Right.
There are lots of places in Wayne that could be considered.
It wasn't on the June 2nd, just to be clear. It was not on that agenda.
Yeah, and, and if you want to email me your contact information, I could talk to you further. I, I, I don't, we don't normally have back and forth talking. I made it an exception tonight just because of the situation and, and just trying to help, uh, ease people's minds on some stuff. But if you would like to talk more, um, if you have my email, it's on the city website. You're more than welcome to, to email me and, uh, I can give you a call.
I will get it from there, and I, I appreciate you hearing me out. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Good evening, Juliette.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Can I get a motion to, uh? We're reconvening and it's, uh, sorry, eight, uh?
Forty-one.
Forty-one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And I need a motion to, uh, close the closed session.
Motion to close the closed session. For?
Roll call.
Mayor Proton Porter?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Yes.
Councilman Webster?
Yes.
Councilwoman Skiff?
Yes.
Councilman Wagner?
Yes.
Councilman Dowd?
Yes.
Mayor Racy?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now is time for, um, public comments for matters not on the agenda. Pursuant to Michigan's Open Meetings Act and the enacted procedures and rules of City Council, now is the time for public comment. Any questions will not be answered this evening, but the appropriate person will make their best effort to respond by the next council meeting or as soon as possible, provided you state or leave your contact information with the city clerk. Please limit your comments to three minutes. And Mayor, I did have one emailed me, emailed into me, um, earlier today, or, um, excuse me, yesterday, and they requested for it to still be read at this meeting because it pertains to the item that was removed. So it, um, it was just a simple statement that says, "We prefer not to have an overnight drug rehab facility located here. Please read this at another city council meeting." Thank you. And that was from Janine Edgar of Wayne.
Okay. Thank you. So do we have anybody that is in the attendees that wish to speak tonight? If so, please raise your hand in the attendee area. I'm having a panelist? Yes. There we go. I think, nope, it's, it's wanting to be a panelist for some reason. Okay. Is he having a? That's what I'm clicking and it's, it's creating that. Okay. Good evening. Is it? I lost your, is that Vicky? Hello? Hello, Vicky?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sorry. I lost your name.
That's okay. It wasn't you, it was me, I unmuted.
Oh, no problem.
Um, I'm Vicky Meesman. I live, I believe, in Mr. Dowd's district number, or ward number four, or Councilman Dowd. Um, my grandchildren, my daughter, lives on Sophia. That's, um, I, I believe the question or the statement that was given to you by email. Um, I'm not, not her, but, um, I, I, I will tell you that the residents there are quite concerned and anxious about it. Um, I am too. My grandchildren live directly across from the parking lot of the facility that you're, considering rezoning. And I was wondering, um, you know, there was trouble last, last year, um, the place had already been closed, the pharmaceutical company that was there before, and there were people gathering in there and, um, the residents there. When sitting on the, when sitting on her porch, I wondered, why are these people there? Because the building has been closed. Um, when the results of that were that, um, the residents there called the police, there was drug dealing and possibly prostitution, and the police department thanked them, they thanked them very much. They dispersed the crowd several times and eventually there wasn't anybody there anymore. And, um, the residents there have relatively lived a peaceful life without that, you know, kind of thing going on. But now they have a concern about the drug rehabilitation place being there and the gatherings and what might happen. Um, I was kind of surprised that it was put on Main Street, you know, historic Wayne Main Street. But, um, I was wondering, isn't there any place else? I mean, it is unneeded, it is needed. I mean, addiction, addiction is a serious problem. And if people are trying to get help, they should be helped. But it seems like there should be a more appropriate setting for that to take place at. And as a resident of Wayne and as grandchildren, and I have an invested interest in that, I would have to say no, with capital letters. I think that the residents have been sending in emails to you, and I'm sure they will be following this meeting. I, I believe it was put on the agenda in the first place, but taken off. I don't know why, and I don't know how you're going to proceed with this, but I know that the residents on that street and surrounding areas would like to know, even with Karma Cafe, Fox on the Avenue. You know, it's, it's, it's something to, and I know you will, I know you'll seriously consider it, and the residents request, and, um, and I appreciate that, and that's all I have to say about it.
Thank you. I, I normally don't answer the questions, but I'm, I'm just gonna just say this so people understand that that might be on the phone for the same issue. Because we get, we got a bunch of questions. Uh, this was actually went to the Planning Commission last week where no residents opposed it at all, and it, it was approved. And then, and we started getting, um, questions this weekend, and we've asked to have it go back to the Planning Commission, which the person that has the building has agreed, and it's gonna go through the process again. The Planning Commission's gonna meet and the proposal that they're, they're gonna vote on is to have the, um, a public hearing on July 30th so that residents can, um, voice their concerns there. That's, will be the appropriate place to do that and try to vet out what's going on with it and figure out what, everything that's happening.
What I understand, the resident, well, the three of the residents that I know of, actually four, um, did not even know there was a consideration for this. Um, I have a letter in front of me, um, dated May 14th, 2020, and they were just given this letter by another, um, Wayne resident who happened to live on this street probably 20 years ago. And it was sent to her.
Yeah, it, it goes out to, I think it's 300, is it 300 feet around?
Put down 300.
And so I believe 44 residents were given, um, notice, um, of that, and that's how, how it would normally happen.
Yeah, and it happened to, it happened to be, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Um, it happened to be the mother of one of the residents on the street, her mother used to live across the street in my daughter's home. So she made them aware of what was going on. And, um, I, I was surprised that Juliette and, uh, some of the others didn't even see this notice. I'm not saying that, it, it, it probably got lost in the mail. I mean, this was, this was hand delivered by the mother to the residents on there. They received a big packet about your Zoom meeting and things like that, and said it was going to be discussed tonight. And, um, I'm, I'm surprised with the concern like, um, Mr. Miller has for his representatives, he's representative of a district or a ward, and he was, he was concerned that his residents should be in, in on this as far as, uh, your previous meeting on June 2nd, I think it was discussed on something. And, you know, I, I, I appreciated him saying that, um, but I would, I would really like you all to try and, um, I know you will, um, take this in serious and, and a concerning situation that is coming up with them. I, I, I don't like the idea that my grandchildren are only 100 away from a facility that probably could be served better somewhere else.
Right.
There are lots of places in Wayne that could be considered.
It wasn't on the June 2nd, just to be clear. It was not on that agenda.
Yeah. And, and, and if you want to email me your contact information, I could talk to you further. I, I, I don't, we don't normally have back and forth talking. I, I made it an exception tonight just because of the situation and, and just trying to help, uh, ease people's minds on some stuff. But if you would like to talk more, um, if you have my email, it's on the city website. You're more than welcome to, to email me and, uh, I can give you a call.
I will get it from there, and I, I appreciate you hearing me out. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Good evening, Juliette.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I won't talk long because, um, that was my mother that was just talking, so she pretty much already said everything that I had to say. Um, so I, I really don't have much more to add to it other than I just want to make sure that, um, you guys are aware that there's a numerous amount of people that, um, are, are upset and very concerned, so that, that's all I really have to say. And it sounds like you guys are going to look into that, and there'll be another meeting, and I'll, I'll look out for that. Um, the only other question I would have is, what's the best way for us to stay tuned on when we should be, um, interacting with you guys or when we should be attending something so that we, we don't miss it?
Well, the Planning Commission meeting that's coming up, and that'll be the, the second meeting of, the second Tuesday of July, and that meeting's at seven o'clock. And on their agenda will be to have the public hearing, and they have to vote on that, but the plan is for that to be on July 30th. So that would be the, the meeting that you really would address this issue with them.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep, you're welcome. Good evening. Oops. There we go. Cherie, I think it is, I'm, I'm.
Yep, that's perfect.
Okay.
Hi, Dan.
Hi, how you doing? Good evening.
I'm doing great. I'm new to this, so I'm a little nervous. I just wanted to second and third on everything that Juliette and Vicky said. I live on Sophia Street, and I was aware that there was a letter that went around for a meeting, but with the COVID, I wasn't sure that everything was going on, and I really didn't know that we were doing Zoom meetings either. So I'm very happy to find out that we'll be addressing the matter, um, on July 30th, like you said, and I'll be looking forward to trying to maybe find a different facility, um, for the neighborhood. And I've been living here for 12 years, and I really like our dead-end streets and, um, our quaintness, and, and we've had a lot of people walk in the streets lately, coming down by the river, checking out people's houses, coming up our driveways, and I don't like that kind of stuff, and I don't really think that the Drug Rehabilitation Center would make that situation any better. And I just live four houses away from Juliette's grandchildren, I'm sorry, Vicky's grandchildren and Julie's children, so, um, that's all I wanted to say, and thank you for listening to me.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else this evening? Okay, with that, can we move the agenda?
Comments from members of City Council.
Okay. Um, Councilman Dowd.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just want to, uh, thank everybody that was involved in today's, uh, groundbreaking at the, uh, Memorial, uh, the Veterans Memorial. I think it's fantastic. It was, I was nervous I was gonna be late, uh, didn't want to be late, and, uh, certainly everybody involved and all the, uh, attendees, and to hear what collectively we, uh, put together to support this in the long term is certainly gonna make it something fantastic and beautiful for a long time, so. Uh, also, I want to, uh, thank Chief for leading by example, Chief Strong, uh, to have a letter of accommodation, accommodation like that, uh, read out, read aloud, uh, speaks volumes to your character and your professionalism. We are truly blessed to have you as a chief of our police force. Uh, with that, I'll pass.
Councilman Miller?
Thank you, Mayor Racy. Um, I had the opportunity, uh, this past Sunday in, uh, participating in a peace parade, uh, that ended in our community, and in that two and a half hour, three hour, uh, walk, it gave me quite a bit of time to think about what racism really is in this country today. And, uh, things that came to my mind is, it's aggression, it's bullyism, it's discrimination, it's intimidation, it's harassment, and it's oppression. And I believe that these are all acts of hate, just like racism is. And thinking also as well is about, uh, the memorial, how we, uh, and I didn't have the opportunity tonight to be able to be there, but I thought about the memorial, about how we're honoring, um, all these veterans who laid down the ultimate sacrifice, uh, to protect these freedoms. And I think that for us that who are enjoying those kinds of freedoms, we have a responsibility of upholding what they died for. And I'm going to be asking, requesting, uh, counsel or support that we do have a human rights ordinance drafted and adopted for this community. I think it's very important that we, uh, as community leaders, that we set the example that all of this kind of hate is not tolerable. And, um, that's all I really want to say tonight. Uh, uh, and I, with that, uh, I will pass.
Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to remind everybody with the easing of restrictions, um, the Parks and Trails Committee is going to be restarting their, um, their park cleanup, so we're gonna have our first one this Saturday. It's gonna be at Sibotan Park, and that is located at 37174 Glenwood. Um, it's gonna be from nine to noon, so we're gonna be starting at nine AM sharp. Um, please bring, uh, masks and gloves. Um, we are gonna be practicing social distancing, uh, but we, we do want to get back on track with cleaning up our parks, so I hope to see everyone there. And with that, I will pass.
Councilman Wagner. Happy birthday, what is it, a day later or so?
Two days later.
Days, yeah. I, I, I wish you happy birthday on Facebook.
Um, yeah, great turnout at the Veterans Round, uh, Plaza Groundbreaking, uh, today. Channel seven was there, as the manager already mentioned, uh, hopefully you'll get to see it on there. Um, Sibotan Park Cleanup Saturday, uh, that's it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Skiff?
Thank you, Mayor.
No COVID, no COVID hair tonight?
No. I, I was able to get a haircut Monday, and it was wonderful. So, uh, no, I'm, I don't have to wear the ponytail anymore, which is very exciting for me, but thanks for asking, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to thank tonight all those who, um, did contact me concerning the rezoning of 35540 Michigan Avenue. Um, I gotta be, I, you know, I thank you so much for your, uh, feedback concerning it. Um, to be honest with you, I love seeing stuff like that. It means that people are engaged and they're involved and they're, um, paying attention to what is going on in their community. So, um, for some, you know, they might look at that as, you know, um, a nuisance, but I was very excited to see it. I wanted to thank everybody. I read every single email. I've, uh, heard your, um, concerns. Um, so thank you very much for contacting me. Um, I just wanted to say, um, I am looking forward to the, um, uh, the, the Planning Commission, um, meetings concerning this matter. I probably will attend them myself just so that I can personally hear also, um, what is being said at them. I wanted to thank, uh, Lori Goen and Mike Biden for their, what I feel is an appropriate response. When they had found out that council was receiving several emails concerning the matter, um, that they pulled it from the agenda and referred it back to the Planning Commission. So I think that was a very appropriate response. I want to thank them for that, and, um, I'm looking forward to the meetings, and I just want to, I guess, I, it is my hope that, um, when we have, um, these discussions at the meeting that, um, you know, it's already been mentioned tonight, um, I believe by Vicky, she said addiction is very serious, it's, um, it's in, you know, these type of facilities are important. Um, I agree with that statement. So I, I just, it is my hope that as we're discussing this topic, that we just remember that, um, people seeking help for addiction are, you know, they're worthy of our respect, they're worthy of our, um, love, and they're worthy of hope. So I hope that when we are discussing, um, the facility and the possibility, um, of it, that we just remember that, to try not to make disparaging marks about, remarks about people who are seeking help for something that is very serious that they're struggling with. So, um, and I do look forward to the Planning Commission meetings, which I do hope, uh, well, I'm going to make an effort to attend as well. Um, I wanted to express again my condolences, um, I believe it was to the Deputy Clerk Kathy's mother, is that correct? Who passed? Yes. Uh, my condolences to Kathy and also to the Pugh family who had, um, who has lost Catherine. Um, I've, didn't, I didn't know Catherine myself, but I've had several classmates. I seen once her, um, once her obituary was, um, put on Facebook, comment about her and what she has meant to their, meant to them growing up. I, I personally never knew her, but, um, uh, just the influence that she had on people in our community. Um, one of them, uh, a previous council member, um, had nothing, said that, considered her, um, somebody that made such a significant, um, influence in his life that he attributes to the person that he is today, some of it to her. So I, that, and, and I've heard just like what an encouragement that she was to many of my classmates growing up, um, and throughout her life, and, um, I, I think that's just an incredible testimony, uh, her contribution to our community. I, um, did get a chance to stop over at the funeral home before our meeting tonight, and, um, from what I understand, she was a lifer in Wayne. She grew up in the house on Chestnut, um, and she raised her family there as well. So, and, um, two of them, one of the, you know, two of them still live in the community. Andy, um, is a pastor at, I believe it's Cross Point, and, um, her son Bob is on our Planning Commission. So, um, just, uh, an incredible woman, an incredible contribution to our community, and I just wanted to express my deepest condolences to the family once more. Um, and in closing, I just want to congratulate, um, the, uh, graduating class of 2020 at Wayne Memorial. From what I understand, they had their ceremony tonight, um, in the football field. I'm so glad that something was able to be done for them so that they can have a ceremony. And, um, I just wanted to say, congratulate them and just go Z's. And that's it. Thanks.
Right. And, and if you want to see what Kelly looked like in high school, you can go to the historical museum's Facebook page, and there's a picture of her, and, uh, you can find out more information about her from high school. In the spirit of the Class of 2020, it, there's one of me too, so it's, it's, it's not just on her. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just want to say thank you to Lisa for the kind words and very sorry I couldn't make the, uh, groundbreaking for the Veterans Memorial. God willing, I'll be there for the ribbon cutting. Uh, that's all for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I have a, it's been a busy last couple of weeks. Um, first wanna, um, just say, I want to, um, I wish my wife, I, I was gonna do it at the last meeting, but, uh, on the third was our 25th wedding anniversary, and, uh, want to thank her for her support. Um, it, it's not easy doing these jobs, and if you don't have a spouse that's understanding and wants to, uh, to be by your side, uh, it doesn't happen, so I, I really want to thank her for everything that she's, uh, done to, uh, support me and, uh, allow me to be in this position. So, uh, I'm thanking to my wife and, uh, and hopefully many more years to come. It's hard to believe it's 25 years already. And then, uh, it's been a, it's been a, it's been real busy. Um, we got to go to, uh, Councilwoman Skiff and, uh, Councilman Dowd. Uh, we went to, uh, the, uh, rollout, uh, senior day last week over at the high school, and, uh, they even let, uh, Councilman Dowd on the property, even though he is a Rocket. He, uh, he, he participated and, uh, and everybody had a good time. It was, it was a, it was a really good thing. And, and I, and I just want to wish the Class of 2020, uh, the best. I, I took, was able to get over there for a few minutes, uh, this evening. I, I, I was very happy, um, under the circumstances that, uh, they, what's going on with the schools right now, with what they were able to do with the, uh, the graduation. They made it better and bigger than they anticipated originally. Uh, wasn't everything that you would normally have, but it wa, it was really nice still that they got to walk, uh, down, uh, the football field, and they had to, they could have at least 10 members of their family on, on the, uh, the track to witness that tonight. And, uh, and you, you saw kids' parents crying and the kids crying, and it was, it was a great sight to see and, uh, very deserved. I know they're gonna put together, um, the, uh, the graduation all together with the speeches that you normally would be seeing and, and, and put that online, uh, here in the, in the near future to, to kind of have a full roundabout what the graduation, um, would normally be, but I, uh, I, I think that the high school did a, a great job with that. And through this, the whole process with this, um, something I, I, I think just an oversight, and I don't think we, people really realize that we have, actually have two high schools now i- in the city, and, and in a couple of years, I think this is the second year, uh, Tinkum moved to Wayne High, and so they have graduates from, we have two high schools that are graduating, and that's, um, out in the, um, the annex of Wayne Memorial, but, uh, just to remember that we have two graduating classes. So, uh, when you see, uh, a picture of, uh, Timber Wolf, that's the Tinkum Timber Wolf, and, um, and, uh, they are based here i- in the city of Wayne, and so congratulations to them also. It, we had, uh, had a great, great time this, this afternoon, um, with the, uh, the memorial, uh, that's a long, uh, it's been a long, taking some time to get there, but it's finally, we got there, and thank you out to everybody that made that happen. Uh, it's very, it's very great to see the community come together. I, I think we, we, we said that, uh, all together, I think we raised around $90,000, um, over the last few years to make that happen. And there's things we want to do in the future too, but I think it's a great start. And when you really think about it, that we, we got that big push to happen during all this, the craziness of COVID, I, I think, uh, it's amazing, and it just shows the testament of our community and, and wanting to make things better, and especially these trying times, we need to have as many positive things to happen in our community as possible, and I think this is gonna be a great thing to look forward to in the near future as we, as we get a chance to dedicate, uh, that here later this year. Also, I wanted to, to talk about, um, I got to go to, uh, the prayer walk, uh, myself, that, that Councilman Miller, uh, myself and, uh, Councilwoman Skiff were at, uh, on Sunday, and, uh, Burning Bush Church did it, and, uh, when they, they called a few days before that and said they wanted to come into Wayne and talk with their chief, and, and he was great, and, um, something I did, I, I felt that was very important for our community to have happen, and so did the chief, and, they did a, the police did an incredible job, um, making that happen. They had already, um, the church had already got the county involved, and, um, it, it was very, very well planned with everybody together, uh, making that happen, and, uh, it was really a, a great event. I felt like, you felt like you were part of a historical event that was happening in our community, um, uh, on Sunday, and, uh, I had the honor of speaking at that, and I appreciated them letting me share my, uh, experience with racism, um, that I, I've seen firsthand, that I know that there is racism going on, and, and it's something that has to stop. And, um, very encouraged by, uh, the outpouring from, from their community and the people that came out to that. Uh, and then with that, this mo, this morning, um, myself and, uh, 17 other mayors and supervisors and, uh, police chiefs, uh, met at, uh, the Westland City Hall, and, and it's a, a conglomerate of the 18 cities that are in the Conference of Western Wayne. We partnered with the, uh, NAACP, and we're gonna have a listening tour that, um, with these, all these communities, we're gonna go around, um, from city to- from city to city and, um, and, and listen, I'll allow, um, people in the, uh, that have concerns, um, with what's going on in, uh, with the marches and everything. The one thing that we consistently hear is people wanting to be listened, be heard. And so that's, that's what, that's what we're gonna do. And we're gonna, we're gonna hear people and we're gonna see how the, the parallels with all of our communities, our police chiefs are gonna be talking together and seeing what can be done, uh, to make things even better. I, I know for our own community, that I've, I've got emails and stuff and, and we already do, um, the things that people are asking us to do. Uh, we're, we're lucky, one of the lucky cities that, that, uh, have made those changes over the years. But there's always room for looking at everything that can be better. And, uh, and we want to, you know, just try to see how we can, um, make a difference together. And, uh, I, I think it's gonna be a, a good thing. What we're told is we're planning on every, every one of our communities, uh, having some type of an opportunity over the, the upcoming months. And so, um, we got to figure out how, how it's received and, and why not. But the first one's gonna be limited to, um, a hundred people unless the governor's order changes. Um, but we're gonna have other ones that will be announced and you'll be able to find that at the CWW Conference of Western Wayne, um, website. But, uh, I, I think, um, it's a, it's a, a, a good start. Um, I think that, uh, we just got to make sure that, that, uh, we're just not doing it to do it, but actually people are, are doing it for the right reasons and just not because this is the time and it's hot right now. But, um, I think that, uh, you know, the heart of, I, I, every single police chief and, and that we're there tonight, we're not happy with what has happened in Minnesota. A, and, um, and, uh, we have a lot of great cops that, uh, that are, are being hurt by the actions of a few. And so we need to continue to, to lift them up in, in prayer. And, uh, just look at how we can make things better and, uh, work together and, uh, and look at how we all can, how we can all be better. It all starts with our, you know, it starts at home, it starts with you. Um, each one of us, what we do to, to make the world a better place will, um, end this for, for good. So, um, with that, um, can I get a, a motion adjourned and some of you will have to unmute yourself to do that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Have-